I apologize, we'll call the meeting to order here in just a minute. We were dealing with some other business last night, just in preparation of future meetings, so that we ran a little long in our discussion, so on those items. So if you'll give the council, other council members, just a couple of minutes. We will call the meeting to order, so please bear with us. Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the August sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, Meeting of the Yukon City Council Order. If you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Gary Reynolds of the First Church of the Nazarene and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Oh God, we've gathered together to do the business of this city tonight. This is a city which we believe you love. You have loved its people and you love us. And we pray that all that's done tonight will reflect that love. Your word tells us that if we require wisdom, you will give it to us if we will ask. And so we ask, would you bless these leaders with a measure of wisdom that helps them to discuss and to deliberate and to decide what is the very best? And when it's all said and done, may it be truly good. And we'll give you thanks in the name of the one who went around doing good. Amen.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Smaestra?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
There is one order of business that I wanted to share. Item number four, which is Consider Approving the Preliminary Platte of Salazar Residential. That item has been pulled for some technical matters. It will be on the agenda of the September the sixth meeting at seven PM this evening. So if someone is here that wants to address the council about that matter, we're going to put it on the September the sixth meeting at seven PM. So I want to let you guys know that, so you didn't have to wait. No action will be taken on that this evening. So if you would come back, we'd be happy to hear from you and would encourage you to return on September the sixth. With that in mind, we'll go ahead and proceed. So we'll start presentations and propretations. Thank you, sir. The next order of business is the visitors' section of the meeting. That's the opportunity for someone to address the council about a non-agenda item. Yeah. I know. Jackie's here to talk about item number three. So and I think... Mr. Burris. Mike Burris? Are you here to talk about an item that's on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. If you would, now it's your name, your address, and we'd like to hear from you.
My name's Mike Burris. I live at three hundred East Platt Drive. It's Parkland Two Edition, and that's kind of what I'm here about. Um, there's a lot of, of construction that's going on there along Tenth Street. It's getting really difficult to get out of Parkland Two. And there's three streets, Mead, Snowmass, and Mesa Verde, that, that empty onto Cornwell. I've watched on those streets where people have, have tried to get out and waited for a really long period of time, and then they end up kind of diving into traffic. It's, it's getting to be quite an issue. I wish the council would really look into, possibly putting a light somewhere where people can get out of the addition. Probably during the school year, for about six hours out of the day. You've got five o'clock traffic, you've got eight o'clock traffic, and then you've got school traffic. It's really difficult to get out onto Cornwell going north, out of my addition. I, it seems like after about three or four minutes of waiting, people get kind of rowdy trying to get out there. I think it's an accident ready to happen. There's another issue at, um, Parkland and Mead. You guys have done a really good job about, uh, a bunch of the intersections in my addition have gotten really ragged. You guys came in and fixed a bunch of them. You missed one at Parkland and Mead. If you'd just look into it, I've been, it's kind of around town that money's tight right now, so that might be a low priority item, so. But if it could be on the list, that'd be nice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else here that's a visitor that didn't have an opportunity to fill out a form that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item? Seeing none, then we will recess at this time as the Yukon City Council, and we will reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is item one A, and that's the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items. They wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August the se- second, two thousand and sixteen. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. At this time, we will adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August the second, two thousand and sixteen; B, the payment of material claims in the amount of five hundred, five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents; C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus in authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D, the renewal of the existing Compassionate Hands Inc. agreement for the term of July one, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, in the monthly amount of one thousand dollars; E, the renewal of the Youth and Family Services Agreement for the term of July one, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, at the quarterly amount of three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars; F, the renewal of the Prisoner Public Works Project Contract with the Oklahoma Department of Corrections for the, for the assignment of Union City prisoners to the Public Works Project at the base cost of five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents per month through the date of June the thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen; and G, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for September the sixth, two thousand and sixteen, seven PM in the council chambers at the Centennial Building, twelve South, South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is two, and that's the reports of boards, commissions, or city officials. Anything, Mr. Crosby?
No reports this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to conduct a public hearing regarding the declaration of the property at five oh eight Queensborough Place as a public nuisance. So that is item number three. Do I read them together? Mr. Sigler, pardon me?
I'm not, I'm not understanding the question. You had to read the whole of it.
Okay. Well, the one was in a box, so I didn't know if we stopped there with the box or...
Oh, the public hearing, right?
Yes.
No. We stop now, we ask if there's any comments from the public, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then you'll read it.
Okay, so that was my question. So if there are any members here from the public that would like to address the council about the home at five oh eight Queensborough Place, if they would, Ms. Weber, I know that you're here. If you would come to the podium, give us your name and address. State your business. You have, you have, how, how much time is it, Doug?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay. Jackie, Weber, five oh four Queensborough Place.
So you have to speak. You can pull it down.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Okay. Five oh four Queensborough Place. I, I wanted to thank you guys, is why I'm here, for taking such quick action on that, this house. It's, I toured it today. It's been painted. All the bad carpet has been removed. The woman that owns it, that is leasing it, is putting in new wood floors. It's just in pristine condition. The people are, uh, the only thing that they need to do now is, the city has time, I don't know when it runs out, to get rid of that building that's behind it, that has all the rats and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, the person that's renting the house, leasing it, it's leased to buy. And, um, so they were told that they would have to be responsible for taking that building down, but it's my understanding that the city has cited them and that y'all will come in and take it down. I don't know. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am. That's fine.
And it's all, I mean, everything, the people are very nice, and I'm glad they're there.
We have permission from the property owner to tear the building down.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. You guys are the greatest. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Jackie. You can come back anytime with those accolades. I'm sorry. I was in Gal- I was, we were fishing offshore, okay. Not, everyone has my cell number either, okay? Okay, we better go on, okay. All right, item number three. And that's, any other, anyone else here this evening that would like to address the council about the public hearing regarding the five oh eight property? Seeing none, we'll proceed with item three, and that's Consider Discussion and Possible Action to Determine Whether the Property at five oh eight Queensborough Place Owned by Doris E. DeVall, Trustee, is a Public Nuisance and Should Be Condemned, Demolished, and Removed. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I might intervene here. If it's declared a public nuisance, then the owner has, you give the owner an opportunity to make nuisance themselves.
Right.
So maybe the motion ought to be to clear the shed in the back of the building, the back, a public nuisance, and give the property owner ten days to...
She assigned permission for us to go ahead and tear it down.
So that's what I was hoping, is maybe we could make a motion, open it up for discussion, have, there's a memo that we've received that has kind of an outline of the details, and then based on that, can we amend the mo-? I just thought we needed to do something in order to have a discussion. How would you suggest we proceed?
I would, well, okay.
No, you tell.
Do I would entertain a motion then to declare a public nuisance and demolish it immediately? That's what, I mean, she's given permission. But she's also expressed a concern about cost. That's my, she's expressed a concern about the cost of demolition and removal. If the tenant there might be able to do it for her at less cost, then first, the city does not have to get involved. The city does not then have to follow the, you know, if she can get it done by her own resources within ten days, then we don't have to get involved.
Right, and I was hoping that maybe whoever, I don't, Mitchell, who did, is Mitchell still here? Someone who, but don't we need, in order to have a discussion, don't we need a motion? That's where I'm...
Hello, buddy.
Okay. So, and then can we move from there? Is that okay? Okay, so do I have a second then? Who made the motion? Is there a second? All right, so there's a second. Now, discussion. Mr. Horton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Have you or your staff been able to meet with mi- with the...
Our code enforcement officer, Ken Silk, received a call from the owner of the property. She made the comment that she was unable to show up tonight, and then she didn't have a problem with us doing what we need to do. I then advised my code enforcement officer that he need to get something in, from her in writing. And basically, what he did is talked to her on the phone until they come up with this wording that you have received. And he went and had her sign it and brought it to me this evening for me to bring to the council to use for consideration on the storage building.
Okay.
At five oh eight Queensborough Place.
So, in summary, what's the recommendation of staff regarding this matter?
Remove the structure.
That the city's going to do that, better than she will?
It's however you, the council feels is appropriate in the timing. This has been an ongoing issue for many, many months to get to the point we're at now. So if you give them any time, I wouldn't give them past Monday would be the latest, is my recommendation.
Well, the bottom of the letter that she signed said, "You also requested that we use the City of Yukon Crew for the upcoming agreed to abatement of trash removal, the demol- demolition and removal of the storage building."
And it says that it, but I, I guess, Mike, do you want to address the issue of cost? Because there is a statement here that says that the costs be as low as possible. So what's the, Mr. Horton, do you know typically what this might cost?
Well, the cost is going to be the actual cost of our labor and our disposal costs. So depending on how much time they're going to have there, basically, a roll-off, loading it up, and disposing of it, it's going to be actual cost. Plus, we have a hundred dollar, uh, administrative cost that's associated with that, for the notices and stuff.
Well, it sounds like they've been given ample time to do it themselves.
Yes. This is, this has gone a long time.
So I think it's come to the point of where we need to do it and then just bill the owner.
Yeah. Also, the question would be, is, as Mike was indicating, our city attorney, that there's lien costs in there as well, or if we declare it a public nuisance, or, huh?
If it's not paid, then we will file a lien on the property.
Oh, okay. So if the bill is not paid, then there is also a cost involved with filing a lien as well on the property. Is that correct?
I, I would recommend whatever the city manager recommends on the removal of this and the timing.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Crosby?
If you want to, we, we're not going to be out there tomorrow anyway, and it'll probably be Monday or Tuesday next week before we can get out there. But we will get it torn down. But I would recommend, just recommend approval of the item as stated, sir.
Okay, so then, if there's any, okay. So recommended as stated in this letter?
As stated in the letter. We will go forward, we will work with her, we'll keep the cost at a minimum, and we'll discuss giving her some credit for some of the stuff she has done already.
All right. So do we need to read this? I, I don't know what you call it. I mean, it's a letter?
The letter does not, not need to be read into...
Approval of the motion is, as stated.
The letter does not need to be read into the, at the meeting, but needs to be made part of the record.
Well, we'll be part of it, yeah.
There's a pending motion, and I'm okay with that. Just, we'll just move forward.
Okay.
There's motion to approve. The motion is stated, and we'd recommend that be approved by the council.
Okay, I guess I'm just, I'm just curious whether there was someone from the City of Yukon made representations that, that they ultimately had an agreement with this letter. I mean, should we be sensitive to that or not worry about that, Mike?
I wouldn't worry about it. I think this is, really, the cost is not going to be like tearing down a house or something. It's just a little outbuilding.
Okay.
Yes, it's a small outbuilding.
So, any further discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. The next item is item four, and that has been pulled from the agenda, reset to the September the sixth agenda. The next item is five, and that's Consider Approving Resolution two thousand sixteen dash ten, a resolution of the Yukon City Council, the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, adopting the operating buzz, budget for this fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Mr. Crosby, anything that needs to be discussed regarding item five?
No, sir.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is six, and that's Consider Approving a Final Platte for the Nava Edition, the subdivision in the southeast quarter of Section twenty, Township twelve, north range five west of the Indian Meridian and Canadian County, Oklahoma, with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I think I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Horton to come up and give us a little more clarity as, is this an older addition, is it not? And, and what's going on down there?
Yes, this was a tract of land that's on the south first street. Basically, they proposed to move a house at one time and make it three lots, but during the process, they decided to leave one house, so basically, it divided into two lots. So we're requiring to plat it because it's a meets and bounds and not a lot and block.
So, say that to me again, I'm...
It was a meets and bounds, and basically, we're, require them to plat it into two lots so they can sell the north half off to build a house on.
Okay. Thank you. So it did require replating then?
Yes, because it was a meets and bounds and then the subdivision of land, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Other discussion, questions? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
The next item is seven, and that's Consider Approving the Project Budget five hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars for associate, I'm sorry, City of Yukon Match, one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars for association of the Central Oklahoma Government Transportation Alternative Program Grant Project as rec- as recommended by the service, no, the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is eight, and that's Consider Approving an Engineering Contract Funding Agreement between the City of Yukon and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for Engineering Services in the amount of seventy-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. The City of Yukon Match, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars involving the City of Yukon Master Trails EC dash eighteen oh one is recommended by the Development Services Director. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smaestra?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
The next item is nine, and that's Consider Entering Into an Agreement with Regroups Mass Notification for Public Notification Services for a three-year term beginning October the first, two thousand and sixteen, at a cost of twelve thousand dollars annually as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Mr. McCarron?
Uh, I'd like to make the motion to approve the agreement with a stipulation that the amended terms of use agreement dated August the sixteenth of two thousand and sixteen be associated with the statement of work rather than one appearing in our agenda that contains the waiver of jury wording.
Okay, so it's an amended motion?
Well, it's, yeah, it's amended to the, this, uh, to the action item itself. That's correct.
Are we all right, Mr. Sigler?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I guess, I, just clarification, the purpose of the amendment, can someone help me or the addition?
I can help you. We've been going back and forth with this regroup people. They've been very accommodating, but their documents don't really conform to Oklahoma Constitution and law that they sent to us. Whenever I would make a suggestion that we need to take out that the laws of New, of New York will apply, they took it out, okay? One of the things, there's, there's two separate agreements, a term of use and a term of service. I asked them to remove the waiver of jury trial. There's a, uh, clause in their documents that says that we, everybody waives the right to trial by jury. Well, we can't do that. They thought they had made the changes. When I was looking up my agenda earlier, I saw that they had not, but now they have submitted that. So Gary has the one that does not, that contains, does not contain the waiver of the jury trial.
Yes, sir. Okay, any questions based upon those comments? Questions, ladies? Call the roll, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. The next item is ten, and that's Consider Entering Into an Agreement with Mother Nature's in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and ten dollars for pest and termite control in city buildings for the period from July the first, two thousand and sixteen through July the first, two thousand and seventeen, is recommended by the Public Works Director.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
I guess, I'm, I'm sorry. It should, uh, should it actually be June thirtieth? Is, is it a physical year, is that more than a physical year?
Mr. Sigler?
Entering into an agreement for more than a year?
It would be June thirtieth.
Okay. So how do we undo what we just passed?
Make a motion to amend to...
All right. Who made the previous motion?
I think I did.
Earlene?
Earlene?
Okay. So I need to read it again?
Make a motion to move that to June thirtieth.
Through June thirtieth.
Through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
So item ten is now amended to read with the dates for the period of July one, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. With that amendment, call the roll, please. I'm sorry, with that amendment, discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next item is eleven, and that's new business? Councilwoman Yonda?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Councilwoman Smaestra?
Nothing.
Councilman McCarron?
Oh, once again, I'd like to thank everybody for all those folks that came tonight that were here to discuss an item, even though we had to table the item. I appreciate people coming out for the support and, and concern about their neighborhoods and everything else. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring a better resolution on September the sixth for them. That's, and, you know, I say it all the time, but Yukon is a great place to be, and I'm certainly glad I'm here. and I'm certainly glad I'm here. Mayor?
Councilman Russell?
I also would like to thank everyone that showed up. That's what means everything to us. If they have an issue or a concern, they need to come and make it vocal. Thank you.
I concur with the comments, and with no other busi... Okay. Jeanie Vincent wanted to remind us of a very worthwhile event,